That reminded me to turn off my.
I did also. All right. We have eight o'clock. I'll call the meeting toward. May everyone stay in for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public discussion?
Let me come up to the voting.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple of topics I'd like to present today. You guys all know, but maybe those who are watching don't know that not only am I mayor of the city of Algona, but I'm also chairman of the Cassuth County Emergency Management Commission. And that commission is made up of mayors of each town in Cassuth County, as well as the Cassuth County Sheriff and one representative from the Board of Supervisors. So we, the Emergency Management Commissioner, are here today requesting restoration of funds that were removed from the Emergency Management Commission's budget in the amount of ninety-four thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars, which is seventy-five percent of our annual budget. So history for those of the public that are watching, listening. During the January two thousand twenty-four Emergency Management Commission meeting, the Board of Supervisors brought a letter to our meeting stating they were cutting their contribution to the emergency management budget by fifty percent, which was sixty-three thousand forty-two dollars. An opinion from the Iowa Attorney General Tom Miller dated May of two thousand twenty-one states, and I quote, "Cities and counties are required to fund the local Emergency Management Commission at the level and by the means set by the commission through its budget approval process provided by Iowa Code Section twenty-nine C seventeen." Unquote. That amount has been and this year was set at a hundred and twenty-six thousand eighty-four dollars. The Attorney General opinion further reads, and I quote, "The county board supervisors shall provide emergency management funding in accordance with Section twenty-nine C nine through twenty-nine C thirteen. There are no provisions in these referenced statutes and Iowa Code Chapter twenty-nine C granting unilateral powers to the county to set or veto funding or other policies adopted by the local Emergency Management Commission." Unquote. Further documentation reads, and again, I quote, "The local Emergency Management Commission is a county municipal hybrid public agency, not a county agency subject to the control of the county board supervisors." Unquote, which is then means that it's different than the Library Board, Fair Board, Secondary Roads Department. So all of the documents that I've referenced that have been provided to three hundred and five supervisors we've personally met with. The other two supervisors should already be aware of this Iowa Code, the funding requirements, and the legality. So during the last week of February this year, Carissa Mueller, who's our Emergency Management Coordinator, was reminded by the supervisors that the commission's budget would be cut fifty percent from a hundred and twenty-six thousand eighty-four dollars to sixty-three thousand forty-two dollars by the Board of Supervisors. Carissa and I then met in person with two supervisors, informing them that the commission is requesting the original amount, a hundred and twenty-six thousand eighty-four dollars, that was approved and adopted at our budget hearing as per Iowa Code. March sixth, Carissa received the emergency management budget from the auditor, noting that the county's contribution was actually cut by seventy-five percent, which left it at thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars, which is not the original fifty percent that was presented to the commission on January twenty-third or what was discussed in person. So I feel basically that we were lied to face to face when the supervisors knew at the time we met in person that they were cutting our budget by seventy-five percent and said nothing. On April twenty-sixth, Chris and I met with Cassuth County Legal Counsel sharing all of these documents I've referred to and history of what's happened since January. He told us he would review the matter. Hearing nothing for three months, Chris and I visited with the county council again last Thursday on July twenty-fifth. It's unclear why legal counsel has not been shared with you as supervisors. I understand that he'll be meeting with you soon, providing guidance and direction in this matter. So in summary, the Iowa Attorney General opinion and the Iowa Code states that the county board supervisors has no authority to set or veto funding to the Emergency Management Commission, and doing so violates Iowa Code. So thank you for listening today, and we look forward to your response of fund restoration. The other item that I would like to present today. I'm just presenting as a concerned citizen of Cassuth County. So it's time for, and we emphatically recommend, that Cassuth County establish for and hire a county administrator position immediately. The county administrator is a credentialed role equipped and skilled in creating, analyzing, and administering multimillion-dollar county budgets. Several Iowa counties strategically and successfully now employ the county administrator role. We believe that a county administrator is critical to the fiscal health and successful, smooth operation of our county going forward. The county administrator is required to have the financial, administrative, and leadership qualifications that are essential to remain compliant and solvent in this complex environment. The benefits of the county administrator position will more than justify the cost of employing this key role, and the funding source already exists for this position. We have previously visited with two of you supervisors individually regarding the administrator position, the funding, and the benefits. Further, you may recall that two of the county supervisor candidates on the ballot for two thousand twenty-four stated in their AAUW form responses that they were willingly served as county supervisor without compensation, which is presently a substantial forty-one thousand dollars per year plus full benefits for each position. When a qualified administrator assumes budgeting and other compliance responsibilities, that individual has the ability to do so knowledgeably and efficiently. So in summary, we must move beyond the confusion, the inexperience, and the compliance challenges of today's environment to one of trust, communication, transparency, and progress. Immediately engaging a qualified county administrator is a critical necessity and benefit for every citizen of our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public discussion?
Stan Iris, Concerned Citizen from Burt. We have an issue with county garbage trucks, as in the semis, the transfer station coming into Burt, running on the four-ton streets. I don't think you guys pick up garbage in the town of Burt with county trucks, semis or whatever. The city has talked with the guy contracted, the driver, numerous times, and nothing seems to be done. I was just hoping maybe you guys could, with it being your contract, you could say something and keep a county truck, semis, you know, eighty, ninety thousand pounds off a four-ton street? If possible? You'd sure help the city of Burt out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, do you have anything to respond to that, or would you like to at this point?
Okay. It's the board's responsibility. This is public discussion.
Yep, I just wanted to.
Who has to visit with me? I have.
Is any, is there any other public discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for the agenda in minutes.
It's a move.
Right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and second on the floor to approve the agenda in minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next up is discussion and decision approving legal services engagement letter with Dorsey and Whitney for two thousand twenty-four urban renewal plan amendment. That is in our folder. We discussed it a little bit last week. Tammy, is there anything you want to highlight on that? Otherwise. It's, did it, did everyone get a chance to review that? Okay. If there's no discussion or questions, I would entertain a motion.
I think it's a good thing that we have a legal counsel with this district, so I would move to approve.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. I'll say that here later. Next up is to approve the supervisor appointments for the compensation board. Tom McGuire has been one previously and is willing to continue. It has in the packet here. I believe Jack reached out to him and he sent an email to all of us.
Christine Newman is also representative of the supervisor.
Was.
Or was. Nobody's representing now, but until.
And I did reach out to, I tried calling her yesterday and I did not get an answer or call back. But I do have two other people that are interested and willing, and that is Tom Strucker and Rod Benkin. So if the board is interested, those are two individuals. Steve Strucker, sorry. I butchered that one. Steve and Rod are willing to serve as well. They've both shown interest in our board meetings and paid attention to things.
Christie did a really good job for the supervisor. I think we should jump over the top of Christie. She's here to pass unless she doesn't want to do it.
Yeah, and I, and we don't have to make a decision today necessarily either. I just. But we, but we should have formal action on it, and I don't, I don't know that we've had that previously in my time on board, so.
I think we did. We didn't.
I don't.
We never did it before, but it's, it's different now. These rules are different. Now you need formal actions, so. I would suggest that you talk to Christie.
See if she's still willing to serve.
Appoint Todd today and then talk to Christie and see if she's still willing, and if she is, I would.
I, I would think we should wait for all of it and do it.
Do all of them at the same time.
Okay.
But does anyone else have any people that are interested that you're aware of, or?
I had one guy reach out to me. He was kind of interested in, but I haven't confirmed that, so.
Okay.
No, I didn't really have anybody for sure.
Okay. When do we want this back on the agenda? I mean, we aren't in a huge rush, but we need to make a decision before we go to the resol, full resolution.
The resolution is on the agenda for next week.
Next week.
Put it off for next week.
I'm sure we can get ahold of Christie by then.
Put it on ahead.
Yeah, that's fine.
That'll work. Is there any further discussion for this item? Otherwise, we can make a note that we will add that to next week's agenda. Doug, we are out for construction right away.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
We have one request for construction within the road right of way. Brian Casey has requested tile crossing drainage tile crossing roads. I believe everything is in your electronic folder. One of the crossings would be across Fort Road just to the southwest of Algona. That is a paved road, and they're planning to bore underneath of that, the complete road right of way and outletting into the, the prime Leone ditch on Joe Heron and Pat Tilges' property. There is compliance from Joe Heron and Pat Tilges. They are aware of the project and they are not putting up, they are not concerned with the amount of water that would be dumping on that. And then they would also be crossing one hundred Avenue. One hundred Avenue is a gravel road, and that would be an open cut. Everything is according to our policy. So I would recommend that the board supervisors approve of this request.
All right, is there any discussion or questions on this?
Do you know who he's having to work?
Brian is doing the design work himself. Brian used to be an employee with Mark Earpolding. And Travis Plut, who is just, just completed the drainage district.
Sixty.
Sixty-six.
Sixty-sub-four.
Sixty-sub-four would be bored, so I'm confident in both of those.
I'll make the motion to.
All right, is there a second? Okay, thanks. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
Signature, please, tie.
All right, thank you.
That's good.
Yeah.
I'll start right now.
All right, Doug, whenever you're ready for discussion.
Sure. Talked a little bit about the urban renewal project, but that's good. We're moving forward with that. Construction on the road, on roads. The project on the boat Hobarton Road, the deck was poured yesterday. They got a couple of small pores today that they will work on. Then they'll allow that debt to cure, get strength. Probably next week, they will start working on getting the barrier rail poured. The DD sixty-sub-four crossing, that was supposed to be completed Friday, and everything cleaned up yesterday, and I do not know, that's the one over eighty Avenue. I, we were not up there yesterday. They are crossing Ninetieth Avenue today, so we are providing the material that the road department is supposed to provide. At the same time, when we run up there, we will look at that eighty Avenue, make sure that everything's looking good there. And then one hundred thirty-second Avenue right out to the east of Algona. We had a large culvert that washed out in May with the May twentieth event, and the material is to be delivered the end of this week and the beginning of next, so we'll get that maintenance work completed. BMW is spraying roadside thistles south of Highway eighteen right now. It started last week. I'm working on the annual report. I'm hoping that that will be finished, and I can present that to the board supervisors next week. Planning and zoning, we do have that meeting next Monday to act on a recommendation for the moratorium. And so August sixth, we'll have board action with that, with that recommendation. Also, the board of adjustment, there's been a lot of business recently, so planning and zoning have been a busy office. And then I don't know if the board would like to have another workshop with self-insurance or not. If you would, just give me guidance, and I'll certainly provide information that you need or would like to have.
All right. Do you guys have anything for Doug?
We're gonna do an insurance workshop. It'd be nice to have some numbers.
Definitely.
Otherwise, we're not making decisions on not knowing what we're doing.
I don't think we can get those kind of numbers until December, January, with actual quotes for next year. So I think we gotta talk about the other stuff and structure and principles and all that prior to.
I think employees are gonna want to know more than simple structures. They're gonna want to know how it affects their bottom line.
Absolutely. And we want to know those numbers too, do I mean?
You're gonna, before you do anything, you're gonna have to know something, how it's gonna affect the employees. Generalizations aren't gonna cut it.
Well, I think there's some things that we can discuss before we have all the numbers, but like we should have another workshop and discuss. I don't know if we'll need Michelle up here for that, but some of that discussion, I think it's just gonna be on our part. What we're wanting, what we're looking for, so.
On the topic of BMW spraying, did you get a message from Brian Tilges about the spraying, Doug?
I have, yeah.
Have you?
I've not had an opportunity to run up north. One, I, I can't get an exact location. He's got, he gave me townships, which I knew the townships were being sprayed, but I will, I will be heading up that way sometime this week to look at.
Okay, have you seen any of the area that they have sprayed?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, have you seen other issues, other places?
I've not.
Okay.
One thing that, one thing that I think the board needs, if, if the board is being contacted about anything. I mean, we've been out, we've been notified about a couple of different situations. A lot of situations were mowed, and we're not mowing this year, so that, that is one way of controlling weeds as well as mowing. So we've been going out and mowing some areas that are within shoulders, a little bit of force. In some of these pictures that I'm seeing are right alongside roadway. I've seen another situation where, yeah, there were thistles in the road ditch, but the acreage in building site was also full of thistles, which is a difficult situation to control. But I have this, what Brian gave me last week, I've not had an opportunity to run up north.
Okay.
Did Chuck Wertz get ahold of you at all as far as, okay, he had called me yesterday and left me a message. There's a broken intake in a road ditch, and I, he didn't say the location, the voice, but I called him back, but I told him that it's in the road ditch. Gave him your number. I don't know if he was gonna call me back or call you.
He may have called, he may have called Lisa, didn't call me specifically.
Or I gave him the office number, but yeah, yep. But just as a heads up, yeah, he had contacted me for that. Also, down in, I don't know what township it'd be, but there's three miles of, I think all three miles are Level B road on one hundred and fortieth street between Highway seventeen and, and that black top that goes by Don Bash's and J.D. Savage's in Laverne Township. That just got all poured on new gravel. I just didn't know, it was like, a couple of guys talked to me about it. How do we prioritize what, what roads are receiving new gravel or not? And I guess, I drove on those roads all spring and summer here. They were, seemed in good shape. I, so just, just didn't know what.
We allow our operators to.
And Cody's done a great job of maintaining that.
So they, they make the decision. The foreman will say, "Take care of your roads," and they know where the gravel needs to go.
Okay.
We leave that up to the, up to the operators.
Okay, because they've done, I mean, Cody's done a great job maintaining that this year.
Do you know, I, I guess I'm not aware of three, a three-mile stretch of.
And maybe not all three, or maybe not all three are Level B at least.
In Laverne Township.
There's no building cider bin or hog setup or anything along those stretch. There's three miles where there's just a couple field dragways. Just to be a mile south of Jonathan Chambers. But in that, three-mile stretch between the black tops, but I was just curious how, how we did prioritize, because I was asked about it. One mile, one, one or two of the miles I know has a Level B sign. I guess I don't know.
Is that by fishes?
It would come, it would come out right about fishes, yeah.
From seventeen, that's one mile, and I don't know if that got gravel, but I wouldn't be surprised that two miles to the west.
Okay.
But I can look into it.
And maybe it was just two miles to the west, but.
All right.
Did it be all, yep.
Question about the urban renewal. Did you want us to make contact with Heidi regarding our financial options for our amendment to our urban renewal? We asked about it last week, but I'm not sure Doug and I got an answer.
With the Northland securities or?
Yeah.
Probably be good to have her know on that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna have to be money made available for any construction to be completed, so.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to, board supervisors.
Okay, then we will reach out to her then.
Doug, for the garbage trucks that was discussed during public discussion going through Burt, can you address that at all?
I believe the statement was made that that road is embargoed at four tons. I, I believe the mayor of Burt is employed in this courthouse. The mayor of Burt never has spoken to me about that, and if that road is embargoed at four tons, I see a lot of grain moving through that road with the same, same loading, the trucks that are leaving the transfer station are lethal loads. They're not overloaded. So it, it also is a farmer market extension road. uh, it it also is a farmer market extension road, which means the road department is, Cassius County Secondary Road Department is responsible for. I will visit with the mayor and see if the person that spoke to the board is in fact representing the city of Burt, or if that was that person's own opinion. That person's trucking company used to haul garbage from the transfer station to Lake Mills as well, who's no longer doing that.
Is he speaking of Main Street there, Wolf's Walmart or?
Somebody would, should have been asking that question, I guess. I have, you'd have to call up Mr. Ibers and ask that question. I have no idea. But I'm sure the road that is being traveled on, I'm I'm making an assumption.
Wouldn't imagine to be any other road, yeah.
And
Are we driving any other way?
They, they're not, it's not a county, it's not a county-owned truck. It's a county-owned trailer that he is, the person's towing. I I don't know.
Are you aware of any embargo on that road?
I am not.
Okay. I can't say at the top of my head that I've seen signs for that, but.
I know I haul a whole grain into the third elevator before on that road. Yeah.
Okay. Alright, anything else for Doug from the board? If not, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Appreciate it.
You too.
Alright, Marge, we got a couple repair requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Carter?
Got number eighty-eight and DD one oh five, section two Irvington Township for Dave Rosenmeyer. Um, it's a broken tile, large wash out there in the open ditch. And he's already had Reddings out there looking at that. And then I've got number ninety in District ninety-one, section six of Wesley. I think Roger, did you?
Yeah, I made the, Ted called, he didn't hear old you that Dave, so he called me.
I don't think he ever called me. So that's fine, but uh, uh, rights are already repaired, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they were timing.
Yeah. For Steve Arndorfer, so.
Okay, um, I had one Dave Rock called me about, and I believe he um thinks it might be a private now, but I didn't get that passed on to Marge before we got here, so see it, um, called back after I'd had her make it out, so this one, I think we can forget about, but we can confirm that after, however you guys wanna handle it, I don't care.
Be good if you, if Marge, Marge put it in the system as
Yeah.
private, so that it isn't hanging out there for anyone.
Right, right. It's just a washout that they saw from the road. Um, but I believe that is private. I can double check and let Marge know, but that's the only one I had this week.
I would make a motion to the supervisor to take care of the request.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried, you know this?
Gotta be quick.
Alright. There you go, Marge. Alright.
Thanks, Marge.
We'll see you again today.
Couple of.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marge.
Alright, Tim here.
Um, so we have two drainage hearings today, one at ten o'clock for DD sixty sub three and one at one o'clock for DD one ten. Next week's agenda, we have a drainage hearing at ten o'clock for DD twenty, Main one and Main four, and at one o'clock for DD four. Also on next week's agenda, we have a closed session with Todd Holmes per Iowa Code twenty-one point five one C, county contribution to EMA. Uh, approving the resolution to reestablish the compensation board for Cassius County. And so far, that's it besides our regular stuff. Um, I did receive a thank you from Cassius County Historical Society. Just wanna pass that down. And then um I also, I don't know if you got this email from Ayler's and Cooney also about um, changes to open meetings and Open Records Act regarding making sure that there's electronic meetings available for supervisors. Um, so that is something we'll need to talk about. Um, even if you don't use it, there has to be um some kind of electronic meeting offered. So we're gonna have, you're gonna have to decide what option you want to make available for those meetings. It's not for public, it's just for the board or supervisors, so.
We already, we already have that, don't we?
Where you guys can join in electronically. I mean, we don't have an official, and I think that's what this is kinda talking about. Is is an official way that you can join electronic meeting. So it's something to talk about, um, and I can send you the information.
Setting an official way.
Yeah, and and I think um, we can put it on the agenda for next week and I'll send you the information I received and then you can decide if you need to take action on it or not.
Usually we have Microsoft Teams as well, huh?
We all, we, we all have, we all have Teams.
Well, we do, cuz we have Microsoft, but that's an Apple, so.
We all have Microsoft accounts.
I'm sure they have Teams though too, cuz it's all the same platform.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, but that's just on, it's on an Apple platform, but.
It's kind of a bird meeting on, on Teams.
So I'll add that to next.
We've used Zoom for other meetings before, um couple of us have used Teams for connecting electronically, but we have.
We go to meeting.
What's that?
You got, go to meeting, you use that.
We might have used that once.
Go, can we get Teams on here?
And that's joinable.
Use Zoom for
Yeah, I, I, I use, I use Teams all the time.
Yeah.
And that's already included with our um license we already have.
So we just have to declare one that we're gonna use?
I have to read through it more specifically, but um it just says that there has to be.
I don't, I don't think we have to formally declare which one, but there's, it talks about, I don't know.
But I thought it should be up for discussion on during an agenda.
Yeah, and we can, we can definitely discuss it. It talks about um, four different options and I think I went to the IPIP website and it laid it out there. Um, that was from
It says the governmental body should choose the electronic meeting option that best meets the needs of the members of the governmental body for each meeting.
I get to the twenty-third and get to that email. So if you go to that link that's actually in there, um no, there, I already had the tab open, didn't even mean the email. But in here, it talks of, it it lays out what's in there and there's the four, there's four different types, so a hybrid is having both remote participation and in-person. Remote is all remote from various different locations, but not having an in-person option. Teleconference is using audio conference tools um, from different locations, so that'd be like what we use the conference line for. Or virtual meeting is involving real-time interaction using integrated audio, video, and other digital tools in which participants do not share. Um that's where they do not share physical location. Remote participation is um, remote someone participating remotely, but there's still a physical location. So it's basically the combinat, the different combinations of whether it's all virtual or in-person with a virtual option. So, I mean, they're all they're all the same end result is that people have access and that's all.
They're ready, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've participated in some electronically, I think Carter has as well. I don't know, did you, Josh?
No, no, I don't think so.
I mean, we've made it available, but now.
My very first, my very first meeting in office was lunch. Cause I feel, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. So I mean, the, the point of the law now is you can't say no. I mean, if someone that's on the board requests it, it's, it's required.
This has to be offered, yeah. Yeah, we've, we've done that, made it available to where we can.
Yeah, and and we can, we can definitely discuss it more and and talk about it that way, but that's the basis of IPIP summary, and I, I would recommend everyone reads that because it's I don't know, it's show, let me see if I can just print it for everyone right now.
Do you wanna just send the link by email?
You already have the link in your email. I'll just print some copies so that everyone has it handy when we go to talk on it, but, but that's.
I'll put it in the packet, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that works too. But yeah, it's, that's kind of what I got out of it was the different types and that it's required instead of optional now.
Okay.
And then the, the last thing I have, um, and I don't know if you want me to talk about it or you wanna wait till we get to one of you guys, um, about uh, the answer from Ann from Ayler's and Cooney regarding the two percent increase and um, when to set the budget amendment hearing.
Does matter, we can address that now.
Okay, so um, I think you all got that email from Ann.
Yeah.
Um, so it looks like there's some issues with that two percent raise, so you guys will have to decide if you're going to change your motion on the raises, um or what you wanna do with that. And then um, we also need to decide when you're gonna do a budget amendment hearing, um, if you're going to do a budget amendment hearing.
Yep.
Any thoughts from the board?
Well, I guess I would just say had I not asked questions or Kyle reached out to attorney and Tammy's been visiting with attorney, the board was just moving forward with something that was an illegal action. And before, in the future, going forward with stuff like that, you can't just on a whim make decisions like that, so let's, let's not continue to do that. So, and because now because of that, now you've told everyone, hey, you're getting a raise, and now that's not legal, so you're gonna have some employees getting raises and some employees not. And that does not help the morale issue if you're looking to solve that. It doesn't help any issue. And so that, and and now you're, if we add a budget amendment hearing already scheduled for the libraries, and now you're making them wait hour or much longer too. So that's a reason I voted no on that. I just, we didn't even have numbers for what it was gonna be. I mean, so, however the board wants to handle that, it's fine. I wasn't on board with it to begin with, but not because I didn't wanna support the employees, but there's some issues there.
Yeah, I guess I would echo a lot of that. Um but I think going forward, whatever goes into this budget amendment, I think we need to see it as a board. The exact dollar figures, everything involved in it, whatever's gonna be published and voted on um, before it goes to publication.
You're gonna have to give me direction on what that is before we can do that.
Absolutely, that's, that's for sure. Um, but I think we need to give Tammy direction and we need to see a finished product in this boardroom before we set a date again, because it's a waste of time and money and everything else if we go through the publication and public hearing process and don't approve it. So everybody needs to see what's here, needs to know what's going on. And any questions as far as legality or anything else, all that should be answered before we move forward.
So legally, we are able to put the numbers together and see what the budget amendment would look like before we even uh, decide a date on the hearing.
Oh, yeah.
When you should know the fit, when the numbers that you wanted to.
You can, you can do calculations all day long. We could do calculations for projections for a number of years, we could do, I mean, you could yeah, that's, that's just running a scenario, but that does not take board action to run a scenario. Um, and that's not what the vote was previously, was, that was a decision to move forward, that was not to run numbers. So yeah, we can we can definitely look at options or scenarios, but there's nothing against the law for looking at that. But yeah, I guess my recommendation would be that we have a final finished product in the boardroom that everybody looks at. So we know whether it's a worthwhile endeavor to go through the process of publication and public hearing. Or any other thoughts from the board on that? Roger, do you have anything? It was your suggestion there, I guess.
It's their opinion. There's always opinions or I'm sure if you ask a different attorney, you'll find different opinions.
Did you read the code sections that were quoted?
Yeah, they're, they're written. Just like every other code section, you can read into it.
While our attorney's giving us advice, I think we should take it.
As far as, you know, we didn't adopt it increase for supervisors, so that code section we applied fairly.
But you did for the elected officials, and that's what they're saying you can't do them.
So, the last one, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And there's, and there's time limits associated there as well.
Yeah, but as, as I read it, there's nothing that would stop us in giving a raise to anybody but elected officials.
But remember, deputies are based off elected officials, so none of the deputies will get.
Three out of four in the audited office and
Yeah.
Yeah. Three out of four in the recorder's office and two out of eight in the treasures.
Three.
Three out of eight in the treasures.
But I didn't read in here that it said you couldn't give the deputies a raise.
The deputies are a percentage, they're a percentage. The deputies are a percentage. They're a percentage of.
They're a percentage of. They're a percentage of the elected official.
Yeah, so you still have to give the elected official raises and not let the deputies get raises.
That's what I'm saying. Half would get one and half wouldn't.
I mean, there's like, yeah, there's there's other there's other offices and employees that would that would apply to differently too, but it's not just a certain office here in the courthouse right now. But I mean, there's there's a lot of pieces to consider there and I think a little more research on the front end would have been prudent. I also just think in general, I think it's less than ideal um to have all those the vote on the comp elected official compensation schedule before the budget. I mean, that's that was all information that was shared out to the public. That's what they were under the understanding of what was gonna happen this year and I I think changing it after the fiscal year starts is questionable at best.
And 'cause that is listed separately on the budget. We have to report that on the budget. So, you know, that is listed separately and published for the public to see, so.
So I guess, do we have a just general discussion about the budget amendment and whatever's contained in there next week or when, what would you guys like moving forward as far as discussion?
We're gonna have to discuss it at some point and set a new date.
Yeah. But Tammy needs direction on what should be included there, so.
Do we need to set it up like a workshop?
No, not necessarily. You just need to tell me who's getting raises, who isn't, and what you want included on the budget amendment.
And actually, we probably should have it on to repeal that action that was already taken, so that that probably needs to be in a specific agenda item.
Why don't you put that on next week and then follow that up with discussion about?
Just just discussion about budget amendment.
Correct.
Okay.
So you want, the first thing you want is um discussion decision to repeal the raise? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. And then discussion for the budget amendment.
We probably sh- and we you could check with Todd for if there's any suggestion for language or whatever. I don't know if we should reference that the meeting that that was um acted on or anything in particular. Um but but yeah, then just discussion on the budget amendment after that.
Okay.
Anything else for that conversation with Tammy here? All right. Um anything else that you had need?
Nope, just a reminder, September tenth, we have a special election. We will have a board meeting that day. We'll just keep it low key. Um we only have one precinct for the special election, so.
What's that for?
It's West City of Wesley. They're changing their mayor term from two years to four years.
Oh, great.
So um but we'll just keep it low key in case there is any issues with that election, but um other than that.
You said that was September tenth?
Yes.
Okay. Um anything else?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Roger, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Josh?
Uh the the emergency management commission meeting last Tuesday as well as the E nine one one meeting, um the emergency management, we discussed the twenty nine C update, um the current makeup that they had proposed did not pass, so it's going back to uh previous, so um backed out to just one supervisor as a representative on that board um on that commission. Um not including the schools. The sheriff will still be a voting member on the commission as well. Um the only difference this time would be their ability for the tax levy. So they're they're pretty positive that that will uh pass this next time. Uh they also discussed doing a tax levy and discussed what it would look like for the cities. They're um talking about a per capita um tax and I can't remember off the top of my head the amount that that was. Um but they kinda ran over some of the numbers for that. Uh she just kinda gave an update on the hazard mitigation plan, waiting on uh two communities to approve and then we'll be fully approved for that plan. Um and that just kinda helps with the the FEMA funding if there's a disaster or anything. That since they have approved the mitigation plan, that they would be eligible for FEMA funds. Let's see. Now we discussed the budget. Um as we heard from Rick this morning, they are asking the hundred and twenty six thousand um that they had requested originally. Um and that is an agenda item for next week, right?
Close session.
It's a close session, okay. And then they discussed the the lease agreement that um we had talked about last week as well. Um they haven't brought it back to us yet, but they discussed doing a forty five for E M A, forty five percent for E N S, and then ten percent for E nine one one to share in their their utilities and stuff, so. But they'll they'll kinda hash all that out and and bring that back to us whenever that's done. They did say that we do have disaster declaration, um and the presidential did get approved, so they we do have public assistance available for the May twenty through twenty one and June fourth um flood events that occurred. I believe right now that public assistance is five thousand for homes um that can be requested. She just talked about doing continuing education. Um she did complete twelve point seven five hours with Homeland Security. Um she's discussed doing some additional. That was about it for the emergency management. The E nine one one, uh there was some discussion about the um event that took place of, I can't remember what community, they did the the mock disaster. Uh they did a mock school shooting um scenario.
Swat City.
Was it Swat City? Yeah.
I believe so.
Yep. Uh one of the things that they discovered from there was that there there was a lot of lack of knowledge on the radios. They have the physics radios that are located in all the schools and and some of the other public places that um that they need to do some continuing education on that to kinda work with training on those. Uh so that way there is an extent that people are knowledgeable of the radios and can communicate. Uh let's see. Uh just discussed the nine one one street signs project. Um they're now looking for looking at areas in the rural county. They um no longer have structures. They're gonna be pulling some nine one one signs that are sitting out there for addresses that no longer have structures there, so they're gonna be working on some of that as well as through the cities. Um they're encouraging people to check their their uh numbers on their houses to make sure that they're not obstructed or missing. Um as that helps with the nine one one um emergency responders and stuff to find the houses and things. Um uh let's see. Uh we discussed that there's going to be change with the election of officers because they happen right now, they're, I can't remember the exact month that we do them, but it's during the summer and it's low attendance, so they had a have an issue with getting a quorum to be able to do the election of officers, so they're gonna be making an adj- uh an adjustment to that in the bylaws to hold the election of the officers for that um board in January. And the next election for that will be in January twenty sixth, that our meeting is open. We also discussed the lease agreement there, same um scenario, so with the forty five forty five time, so.
All right, thanks, Carter.
No meetings.
No meetings, all right. Um reminder for everyone, we have K C A D C County White Breakfast tomorrow morning.
Seven o'clock.
I'll be there.
Um I had C I J D C here this last Friday, the twenty sixth. Um financials are in a pretty good place. Um like well, yeah, they're they're good. And then um detention, like bed count and stuff. Um we're actually tapering off a little bit. We're down, we're from where we were here earlier in the year. We were averaging up towards forty five. Now we're down towards about forty per day, but our year to date average is forty two point nine per day. So pro rated, that's over fifteen thousand bed days um of service if that continues. Um average days per month for members are over eight hundred. Affiliates are just shy of two hundred and non contract about two fifty average. We are continuing to see, we are continuing seeing the trend of um more serious crimes and especially felonies, and they're staying longer. Like Story County has one on a class A felony that has been there for three hundred and forty two days. Roger, you probably didn't see any that long when you were on.
We had one that stayed there a year once, but he was mentally challenged.
We've got two over three hundred days, another two fifty seven. There's there's some ones that have been there for a while, but the first the monthly count that shows all of them that have been there through the month. Um the first entire page is felonies. The top third or the second page is also felonies, and then you get down to a few about a third of a page aggravated misdemeanor and then serious misdemeanor. Um transports is another big area of service. We hit another record on that this last fiscal year for over eight thousand trips for F Y twenty four. So that business is um staying pretty pretty solid. There was some discussion about uh updating our twenty eighty agreement with some couple counties being added. There was additional discussion about that as well, so um we will probably have a new twenty eighty to vote on at some point in time. But our next meeting for um August would have been, the fourth Friday would have been during ISAC, so we are not having that meeting, so our next one will be in September. Um and that that's a lot of the high level nuts and bolts for C H A D C. Um drainage public hearings yet today. Uh we met with Bancroft EMS on Thursday. I think that conversation went good for the most part. There's I think there was some misunderstanding that A L S was going to be paged on every single call. Um because there's been some frustration that um we've had crews showing up that were B L S trucks and versus A L S, which I talked already, the class we have going on right now, we should have yeah, obviously pending people passing that class, but um pending that and another couple that are taking paramedic courses right now. Everyone's either in or signed up for a class that would give them A L S skills. So I mean, we're, we've come a long way from where we were three or five years ago. Um and a lot of the concerns Bancroft had, I think, could benefit from just increased communication, but also the continuation of the steps we already have in place. So I think that was a positive meeting. We're there probably about hour and a half, but any questions on that? Otherwise, um I think that's all I had and.
We got health screening next week.
Tammy, do you know if we have health screenings next week?
This is the sixth, I think. Hold on, let me see if it's on. It should be on your calendar.
Six thirty, five metrics. You got it on your.
Yes, it starts at six thirty. You have to register, so if um you haven't contacted Donna to get a time, you should contact her. It's six thirty to nine thirty, and I know she's been sending out. I have my appointment time, so if you haven't talked to her, you should talk to her.
Sounds good. Any other board discussion here?
Uh I forgot to mention, I do have our department corrections uh this Friday.
Okay. All right.
So you have them.
Yeah, if not, we've got a little bit of a break here till our informational meeting on sixty seven three, so don't go too far. We'll need to be back by then and we can I guess I don't, if there's nothing else, we can kinda take a long break here, so. Thanks, everyone.
Yep.